Good evening, everyone. It's six forty-seven, so we're going to call the school committee meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have a moment of silence.
Yes, I can take that. I'd like to do a moment of silence for Dr. Maureen Murray-Adamsen, who died suddenly on September twentieth. Maureen served as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Grants for Walpole Public Schools, and after leaving Walpole, she went on to serve in Braintree Public Schools as Superintendent. So Maureen, she dedicated her life to helping others, especially young people, and she was known by her colleagues and friends for her instinct to make such a positive impact. Maureen and I actually completed our CAGS program together. It was many years ago, and she later pursued her doctoral work alongside Dr. Jean Kenny, our former Assistant Superintendent. So Maureen was an incredible educator. She enriched countless lives, and she will be sorely missed, so I'd like to do a moment of silence. Thank you.
Excellent. Next up, we have our Walpole High Student Report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vanya Singh, and I'm a sophomore at Walpole High School. Thank you for having me again tonight. First of all, happy fall, everyone. We are already deep into the first term, and the progress reports came out this week. On Friday, October tenth tomorrow, the high school is administering the PSATs for sophomores and juniors during the school day. No action is required on the part of students and families. Similar to the MCAS, students are not required to prepare beforehand, but are still encouraged to try their best. The students have already been registered for the test by Walpole High School. Nine graduate students will be participating in the career fair, team-building exercises, and hearing from a guest speaker. Seniors are encouraged to use this day to focus on their post-secondary planning, whether that is college visits, meeting with a recruiter, scheduling interviews, or cashing up on applications and supplements. For the past few Wednesdays, we have had a multitude of colleges visit our school, some of which include the University of Vermont, UMass Amherst, UMass Boston, and Suffolk University. Moving on to the clubs at our high school. The Walpole High School Speech and Debate Team had a successful trip at Yale University in September. We had thirteen students compete, and two students advanced to the semifinal round, Erin Aurora and Swara Sanjatkar, where they placed eighth overall. Additionally, one student, myself, progressed to the octo-final round. Walpole High School is also proud to start its first HOSA, Future Health Professionals Chapter. HOSA is a national organization that provides students with opportunities to explore healthcare careers, develop leadership skills, and participate in community service and compete in health science events at the state and national levels. Additionally, students have founded a new club called Girl Up, a global leadership development initiative founded under the United Nations that empowers young adults to become advocates for gender equality and social change. The initiative aims to promote awareness, develop leadership skills, and raise funds for UN programs that support the empowerment of girls in marginalized communities worldwide. And finally, since we're already in the month of Halloween, the Best Buddies Club is hosting their annual Halloween dance on October twenty-fifth. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask, but that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. In what that busy report and busy schedule, I'm sure you have some homework to do, so thanks for joining us and providing us all that information.
Thank you.
There's John.
All right, next up, we have new business, ELE update.
Yes, we have our ELE Director Jill Kimball. She's going to provide an update regarding our wonderful program.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I am once again so thrilled to share with you our English Language Education Program here in Walpole. So first, I would like to start by acknowledging Tom Reeve, our Director of Technology, because he gave us a wonderful new branding for our ELE program and a new logo. So that is seen here on our first slide, so thank you to Tom for that. So in looking at our program this year, and this is based on the data as of October of this month, our student information data, we have students in the ELE and former ELE programs who speak twenty-seven languages in addition to English. So the largest language population that we have is Brazilian Portuguese, followed by Spanish, and then we have Russian, Arabic, and Haitian Creole following those two. This is just comprised of students who are in the ELE or former ELE programs. So we do have students who use other languages that are just not in one of these programs. The former ELE program are students who have exited the ELE program. After the four years of exit, we monitor those students to ensure that they're having continued success outside of English Language Education, so our former ELE students are also part of our ELE program. And our ELE and former ELE students represent twenty-seven countries and territories. The majority of our students, more than half, are from right here in the United States, followed by students from Brazil. Then we have students from El Salvador and India, both at about three point five percent of our total population, and then Russia, to round out the top five. So in looking at data for our ELE program, in the three years prior to this year, which was also the year that I started, so it starts in October of 2022, we can see the fluctuation in our program. It stayed pretty stable. You can see last year at this time in October, student information reporting, we had a hundred and thirty-six students. This year, we have a hundred and forty-three. So it did go up slightly from last October. That said, in June, we had a hundred and fifty-four students. So while it's up from last October, it is down from the end of the year last year. The orange represents our former ELE program students. The light blue, thirty-six students, are new to Walpole Public Schools. So these are students who are new to the ELE program, whether they be incoming kindergarteners, who are all new to Walpole Public Schools this year, or other students who have entered the program this year. We do not have any SLIF students, students with limited or interrupted formal education this year. We actually did have one SLIF student last year who entered after the October data was entered, and that student has since exited our SLIF program. And then we have twenty-seven students who are on an ELSP, which is the English Language Success Plan. Those are students who aren't meeting their state benchmark for English proficiency. We do have a greater population of students this year and a lower number of ELSPs from last year, so that's moving us into the right direction. In looking at how our students are dispersed in our schools, we have students in the ELE program in every one of our schools, the lowest being seven students at our preschool and the highest being twenty-seven at Elm Street Elementary. The former ELE program students are lower than the ELE program students in number in every school, as you see, except for the middle school, and this disproportionate number is most likely due to the fact that it takes, on average, six years for a student to become proficient in English. So our students who are entering in kindergarten and first grade are all exiting at the middle school timeframe. And when we look at the proficiency levels of our students in the program, we have almost thirty-three percent of our students who are at the foundational level of language. That means they're new to the English language. They have WEDA level scores of one point oh to two point nine. WEDA levels run from one to six, with six being considered grade-level proficiency. Students in Massachusetts exit the ELE program when they reach a four point two in proficiency level. So the foundational students are really those students who are at the beginning stages of learning English. The transitional students are almost forty-five percent, and those are the students who have transitioned out of foundational and are getting prepared to exit the ELE program when they reach that four point two score. We have almost twenty percent of students in our pre-K and kindergarten ELE program who we are collaborating with, and we also have almost three percent of students in an alternate ELE program, and these are our students who are receiving English Language instruction based on developmental appropriateness for students in an alternate program. This graph is important as far as proficiency levels are concerned for instructional times. So our foundational program students are entitled to ninety minutes of instruction per day by a licensed ESL teacher. Our transitional students are entitled to forty-five minutes per day by a licensed ESL teacher. In our ELE program, we have two sides. We have EML, which is direct English Language Instruction, provided by our ML teachers. We have eight in our department and the district. We have seven teachers and myself to coordinate the program. We also have two hundred and eighty-nine administrators and teachers who have the SEI endorsement, who are on the SEI side of the program. At this time, we have two hundred and five administrators and teachers who are directly impacting our active ELE program students. And a few updates this year from DESI in the language survey. The language survey was released by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education this year and needs to be fully implemented by the end of this school year. We are already in the process of adding this to our Family Connection Registration System. The changes in the language survey are not only a name. It used to be called the Home Language Survey, and now it's just called the Language Survey, and this accurately represents really the data that we're looking for. The Home Language Survey identified languages in the home, and we're really looking for languages of the individuals in the home, so this more accurately identifies those. So we accurately identify with this new language survey, Students for English Language Programming, and there's three real updates to this language survey. First, it gives the purpose for data collection. The old survey asked the questions in the registration system but didn't give a reason for why we are asking the questions about all of your family members and what language that they speak, and this new survey does do that. It also provides guidance for completing the survey. Many times when families would complete the survey, they might have a child who joined a language program in the community, or they might have a child who attends language programs through their religious institution, and they weren't quite sure how to answer the language questions of what their child might use or speak. So this new survey actually provides more in-depth guidance on what answers the survey's really looking for to support students. And it also uses clear questions to decrease those misunderstandings. Again, it's not asking for language in the home, it's asking for languages of individuals within the home. It's divided into three sections. The first one is that language use at home. Those are three questions that specifically ask what languages are used or understood by the student who's registering, and those three questions are used to determine whether we move forward with English Language Screening for the student who's registered. The rest of the survey provides information that is not used to determine English Language Eligibility. The second question being Translation and Interpretation Preferences. We're really just looking for how best to communicate with families. Whatever language you put there will not determine a student's eligibility for English Language Education. The third section is about prior education, so we can learn more about a student's background and their prior education before coming to Walpole Public Schools. The Department of Education does have the survey currently available in thirty-seven different languages, and this new language survey is really meant to be a welcome mat as opposed to a gatekeeper. It's not meant to be a barrier or a label. It's really meant to be a conversation starter, and then we like to continue the conversation once we start with that language survey. As our students stay within the program, we've developed the Multilingual Learner Family Engagement Center online to continue that conversation with our families, to continue to engage our families after registration. So our MLFEC online is a resource really for multilingual learner families to find out more information about our schools and our community here in Walpole. I have been partnering with Jen Breen and with Naomi Austin to work in greater capacity in engaging all of our families, not just our multilingual families, but some of the things that can be found on our Family Engagement Center online are information such as new student registration, our schools, important documents and forms, and how to fill those out. And really, all of the information that you find on that page all comes from the Suggestions or Questions box at the bottom, where people have written to us asking questions or providing suggestions that we add to our page, and that is where we pull all of our information from to assist in that regard. We are looking to grow this in a greater capacity over this year and in the coming years to provide more than just online engagement. In looking at our ELE curriculum, this is the second year of our implementation of our Vista Materials. We started with Vista Materials, curriculum materials, last year, and this year, we're really looking to implement the Vista Materials within, in the WEDA ELD Standards Framework. So the WEDA Consortium is what Massachusetts belongs to for English Language Instruction. In the state, there are forty-one states and territories that also belong to WEDA. And WEDA consists of English Language Development Standards, consists of key language uses, communication modes, which is the listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and that bottom-left picture are proficiency scores of an individual student. Again, this is a sample access score report. The ACCESS is the test that our English Language students take annually in January and February to gather more information on English Language Proficiency. The WEDA Standards Framework and the ACCESS scores are all used with our Vista Materials, really to teach through the dimensions of language, and that's what we're working on incorporating this year in our curriculum. The dimensions of language are teaching at the word phrase level, so academic vocabulary, the sentence level, which is really grammatical complexity and sentence structures, and then the discourse level, which is how we organize language, the cohesion, the density of the language that we use, and all that we're connecting to teach within the sociocultural context of the language class or the class, the content class that they're in. So as well as teaching students, we're also teaching educators here in Walpole. There are two new SEI courses for educators. These are both put out by the Department of Education, and these do provide fifteen professional development points for any educator who takes this course towards their ESL or SEI professional development points that are needed for recertification and relicensure. The two courses put out by the Department of Education are on enhancing grade-level content areas. One is Math and Science, the other is ELA and Social Studies, and it's instruction for all through a multilingual lens. So this course is really meant for content teachers of these content areas. In the middle, you can see kind of what the framework is for this course. It takes the high-quality instructional materials and the mass frameworks and combines those with the WEDA Big Ideas and the Massachusetts Blueprint for L Success, as well as the Acceleration Roadmap, and combines that into working with content teachers to improve their SEI Sheltered English Immersion Instruction in the content classroom. Last year, I completed the training course with the Department of Education to teach the Math and Science course, and we did complete our course this past June. We had twenty-one educators join our class, and it was very successful to work with all of these teachers in the district and grow that knowledge and that lens enough. I've been asked to provide more in that regard this fall, so that's excellent to continue that work. The ELE and Social Studies course just came out. It's a brand-new course. I just trained on it in August. As a matter of fact, the training just ended last week for this course, and I anticipate that we can roll that out this June after the school year ends. We can assign more educators to that. I was actually told by our committee at the Department of Education that instructed these courses that I am currently the only educator in the state who has been trained to teach both courses, so we can bring those both to Walpole. Our Summer Learning Program again was a great success, so we're really looking to put more grant money into moving this forward in the future years. We had thirty-one students participate this year. This is our, kind of our, look at how they are dispersed through different grades and at different levels in different schools. We actually had a stronger concentration this year than in previous years of our secondary population, which was really exciting for, to see more students in grades six through twelve attending our Summer Learning Program. I really want to acknowledge our coordinators of our program because they did do a phenomenal job. Charlene Mello and Leanne Lamb, two of our ML teachers in the district, coordinated our summer program together, and they did a wonderful job, you know, engaging all of the students in their activities this summer. This summer, we also added a STEM component to our ELE Summer Learning Program, and that was taught by one of our newer ML teachers to the district, Libby Sarkis. So we were able to add STEM projects this year. We also added support for secondary students for those summer reading books and math packets that all students work on over the summer, so we were able to support our students' summer work through this program as well. We also partnered with some community partners in our program. The Walpole Police and Walpole Public Library have come every year to work with our students, and this year, we also added Tufts Veterinary and Walpole Dental, so they all came to our program this year to educate our students on what they do for and with the community. And lastly, I would like to just make a plug for our Multilingual Learner Family Meet and Greet Dinner for all of the families of our ELE program students or our former ELE program students. We are having a meet and greet. Come meet your child's English teacher and other staff and faculty, meet other multilingual learner families in the Walpole School community. This is on Thursday, October sixteenth. It will be at the middle school from five-thirty to six-thirty. Everyone is welcome. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your enthusiastic presentation. I think it's obvious you love what you do.
I do, I do. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions? Nancy?
I was going to say, I just love the enthusiasm, and I think it's, because it's sincere, and it's great, so that's great. I wanted to ask you just a couple of unrelated questions.
Sure.
When kids reach the ability to be former English Language learners, do you find that they have trouble succeeding, or, like, in other words, is it really a good thing for them to be a former English Language learner, or should we be doing more for those kids?
That's a great question. That actually came up last year with the state when they changed the regulations in this regard. Prior to last year, a student would have to reach a four point two overall proficiency level with a three point nine in literacy and have what the state called other relevant data to support exit from the program. The other relevant data could be looking at academic grades. It could be observation. It could be some other standardized or other test scores to go along with it. As of last year, that was found to be subjective and potentially inequitable amongst the communities because everyone was using different other relevant data to make these judgments. So as of last year, the state said that it is now mandatory, when a student reaches a four point two overall with a three point nine score in literacy, they must be exited from the English Language Program. So what the state did when that change was made was they made more guidance available around what we need to do to serve our former English Language Education students. It used to be that our former students were monitored a few times a year, teacher observation, making sure there's collaboration with the teachers to continue success in the classroom, and now there actually are weekly meetings. There's professional learning communities dedicated to it. There are more strategies and structures in place for our former ELE students, specifically the ones in the first year who have exited because of this change in the Massachusetts' guidelines of exiting students. So we do have more supports in place this year to work with our students, and we do provide instruction to our students even if they are former, you know, should we find that they are not having success outside of the ELE program.
Great, so it sounds like you're not particularly concerned, like you've got that piece of the work covered.
We do. We feel as though we are, we really have amped up what we do to monitor our students. We are in more communication and collaboration with our students' teachers, and we do have instructional means set up should our former students not have success outside the program in order to continue that success and potentially be pulled back into the program should that conversation need to occur.
Great. Two other questions, kind of small. On one of your graphs, you had something about where the student population comes from, and it was over fifty percent comes from the United States. I wanted to understand that a little bit better.
Sure.
So is it like families where another language is spoken, but they're literate in English already, or is it that they're not proficient yet in English?
That's a great question. So that data actually comes from state data on country of birth. So that's where that information comes from on that chart, is basically where the students were born. So within the little over fifty percent that are born in the United States, those families in their households speak languages other than English. They may also speak and use English, but they do consistently speak or use a language other than English as well. It could be students who are using it as a heritage language. It could be a student's first language, but there is a language use other than English in the home. We do have different levels of language use, different levels of literacy that students are coming with in a home language or in English, so it really varies by family situation and family circumstance, but these are all families who have knowledge of and use languages other than English, depending no matter where the student was actually born.
Okay, thanks. My last question is about parents. I know that a couple of years ago, Bridgette and Bill Hahn and you were trying to get like a parent advisory committee together, and, you know, I think sometimes when families are new or when they are unsure of themselves, they're a little intimidated by the Superintendent of School, just the name, as opposed, but they might, might...
The ELE Director.
I know. She's not scary, but have we gotten anywhere with having some parent leadership, for example?
Sure. So this year, at this time, we do not have parent leadership, but we are working towards that. We're hoping at our opening dinner, that's when we look to garner our... So we take the first thirty days of school, which is state guidance, to screen all of our incoming students. We had over a hundred students to screen, I want to say it was a hundred and three this year, to screen for English Language Education Programming eligibility. So we always don't know who our parents are yet until after the first thirty days of the school year, so we really do take this opening opportunity to really meet with our parents and see if we can garner leadership. We do still have the ML PAC. This is actually an ML PAC event that will be happening so that we can introduce some of our newer parents to what we're doing and garner some of that leadership. We also, in the past month, had, while we were screening, had been working with families during the curriculum nights to bring more families in, because as you mentioned, it can be intimidating to maybe not understand how schooling works in the United States or maybe not have, you know, a full proficiency in the language to understand quite how to approach a curriculum night or a back-to-school night. So we were able to provide interpreters for all of our families who requested interpretation for the night, and we really reached out to the families prior to encourage more families to enter into the school community and engage with the school community so that hopefully we can look to grow our ML PAC community.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Seeing as there's no further questions, thank you so much for explaining that to us. You appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Just saying, there's, it didn't crack...
Just saying, there's, it didn't count, doubt, I didn't have any doubts that she's the only one to be trained in these two courses. That's just Jill. She, she trained all of us when we were principals on SEI. So she's just absolutely, absolutely incredible. We are, we are so fortunate to have her.
Awesome. All right. Next up, we have a vote on town meeting articles.
Mr. Friscus.
So we have two articles this year on the town warrant for fall town meeting. The first article two couples two things together that at one time were separated. So I want to distinguish those two just for the sake of clarity. So we generally, we are receiving an additional $590,000, approximately 590, just looking for my exact number here. Sorry. 59241 is the exact number that we're receiving. That will be recurring revenue that comes to our operating budget and that will be built into our budget. The second piece of Article Two includes our Medicaid, McKinney-Vento and parking. Those were not always lumped together. They are now. That is one-time money that's being added to our budget. And it will go away at the end of the year and reset with next year's funding for those three items. So our new budget, recurring budget is $58,546,185,000. That represents a 4.47% increase comparable to the prior couple of years that we've had increases. And so I just wanted to clarify that because reading the article in the town meeting warrant can be a little bit confusing. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Our overall increase, setting aside this one, this recurring money that we're getting at fall town meeting, was $2,507,36, is our overall increase, which represents again 4.47%. So that's Article Two. Article Five represents our capital funding that we've discussed at length this year. So just to rehash, we were approved to receive Chromebook replacement funding at $387,000. We also received, so let's go over. Security cameras for the Old Post Road School for $8,500. We received snow removal equipment for the new middle school for $31,000 and interactive smart boards for the Feeny preschool for $34,000. We did not receive funding for playground padding replacement District Y to $200,000 or playground padding for the Boydens School Playground. That was the sec, third year I think we requested that. And we have since used our own funding resources to replace that padding. So that's all taken care of. So that is Article Five of the town meeting warrant. And those are the only two articles that represent this school committee or school department.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Article Two, Mike, because, you know, we have some, some people that really do pay attention to our budget and want, want to understand. And like, if somebody was paying attention last spring, we had a $1.2 million gap that was significant and concerning. And we worked hard to communicate it, not just to the select board and to the finance committee, but to the public in general, that, you know, we were going to do our share of closing that gap. And I just think it's important for us to, to recognize the fact that we did our half of, of that effort to reduce the gap. And now at, at town meeting, we will be receiving the money that the town had promised to do from their end so that we didn't have to lay off anybody in particular. We did have to eliminate some positions and we did have to use the, the attrition money that came in. But, you know, I think it's just important for us to, our budget's complicated. And I think even people on the finance committee or the select board need to understand the, the things that you in particular have done to make sure that, that we are using new revenue carefully and that, and we're also doing what we need to do to honor our, our half of the commitment. I think that's an important piece.
I agree. Very, very well put.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would make a motion to approve Articles Two and Articles Five. That's what we need. If that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Second.
A motion by Nancy, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Mark, you had your hand up for.
I approve, yes.
So five, zero, zero. Excellent. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a grant update. Keep going, Mr. Friscus.
All right. So on, the enclosed information includes the grants for Walpole Schools. We share this with the school committee every year around this time. And it includes a variety of different funding resources, whether it be state sponsored or federal. The title grants are included within here. Our special ed grant funding, which is almost a million dollars, is included on this list. We have our early childhood grant on the list. And we have our MEKO grant. So all of our grant funding that sustains particular programs within our districts that are critical, because if that grant funding went away, a lot, in a lot of cases, if not most cases, the things that we do with those funds would have to go away as well because they're not supported within the operating budget. They're solely grant funded. On the second page, you can see the Innovation Career Path funding that the high school continues to pursue for funding the, the career pathways program up at the high school. And that is solely grant funded. It is our intention over the next few years that we will roll that into the operating budget, make that a, a part of our school department that's sustained by our operating budget. We also have our, what we call our nursing grant, which is a comprehensive school health services grant. That was reduced this year by 8,000. Just trying to highlight a few of the things. We received a science grant that Assistant Superintendent Hahn and Jody Delva managed that grant funding. There's a lot of wonderful services that, and materials that have come out of that grant. And I think we're very fortunate. And there's a lot that goes into, a lot of PD that comes out of that grant that has really opened up opportunities for our middle school in particular to advance its science programming. So that was a really wonderful opportunity that came up last year. Two grants at the end. I think you only have one, but I'm going to mention the second one. And Bill Buckley, I hope you don't mind us putting you on there as a person who really sponsored and pursued this earmark funding. This is the second year in a row that we've received what we call earmark fundings, which has not, has not been traditional for us. The first earmark, which I think is included in your packet, was $100,000 that we were provided for Chromebooks. And when I wrote the response to the state about what we intend to do with that, I said that we hope to embed the Chromebook funding within our operating budget and that this $100,000 will help us transition in that direction. So I hope that in this year's budget, we'll be able to add 100 or 150 or maybe 200,000 of that funding that we need to our operating budget. So that was the Chromebooks $100,000 earmark funding. The second piece, we just learned of literally a couple of days ago. And I asked Jody to add that on to this list. And that's the high school earmark funding for improvement, improvements of pedestrian and busing access at Walpole High School. So that will go into the high school project overall. It will supplement our budget and allow us to go a little bit further with the things we wanted to do related to school safety, parking lots and things that are important that just maintain the logistics of that parking lot. And that is $125,000 that we just learned of. So we're managing that. That's really, goes directly to the town. But the school department, since we manage these grants so closely, we're managing that piece. And that will go towards, again, the high school project. On the third page are some carryover grants. We are allowed to, in these particular cases, carryover funding. And actually with the second one down, Grant 240, the IDA grant, we have to leave funding in that grant because it doesn't get approved until sometime in October. And if we don't have funding carryover and we start paying staff out of that grant, which we do a lot of, we have been cited on that in the past. And they said, you have to leave carryover. You cannot assume that you're going to get the grant because if you don't, then you're going to have a problem with that. So we do carryover balances for a variety of reasons in these particular grants. And then on the last page, we have a couple of grants that came about and have unfortunately gone away at this point. One of them was the HVAC grant that we had for Walpole High School. That was related to the COVID relief funding. That was on last year's sheet, so we wanted to wrap it up because there was still a balance. So that balance is now zero. We've used a lot of that funding for the high school renovation and work that's going on there related to HVAC. And then we had a chronic absentee grant for $10,000, which was the state's efforts to improve student attendance. After going through COVID, there was obviously a drop off in attendance. And Ed Connor was paid a portion of his salary from that $10,000 because he did specifically work on attendance improvement. So that's the final of those COVID grants that has now closed out. Happy to answer any questions on grants. I'm not a grant expert.
I can help answer some questions.
I, I just wanted to, there's two people we have to recognize with all of these grants. And one is Dr. Hahn because it is a tremendous amount of work the end of the year and throughout the summer to have all this information that he has to document to be able to secure these grants year after year. And the other is Jody Delva, who, who was managing these grants. And we, you know, fortunately, we keep getting grants. But she, she has to be able to, you know, be able to maintain it and keep track of it. And it's a, it's a tremendous amount of work.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Mr. Buckley?
Please, Madam Chair, sort of piggyback on Mrs. Gallivan's comments from the last agenda item. It just sort of shows you, we're, we're a quarter of the way into this fiscal year. We're just closing out our budget. This, I think, dovetailed very well into that subject matter because it shows us just how many additional patchwork pieces of funding it takes to get this. I, I think we, we've said it for a while, the budget's a year-long process now, really. And it, when you look at these sort of grants, I think we're very beneficial because we work so closely with our legislative delegation to advocate to them when they have different types of bond opportunities to say, hey, don't forget to throw something in for us. And I think we're also, it's beneficial that they sort of have a inclination towards education, all four of them, because there are other competing requests from our own community. And we seem to be doing pretty well in that as well. But I think it, it just goes to show you that, and more of this tremendous amount of work that goes into it, but also in the event, one of these, like the IDA grant, it's almost a seven-figure grant, that goes away. That's a very serious effect to this district. And sometimes we feel that some of these larger federal grants are more utilized by other communities. But there's still a lot that, that we have here at home. So I think it's, it's timely now to take a look at them. But it's also instructive as we head into town meeting and do those final transfers to see how much, just how many different streams of funding are involved and how every single one of these funding mechanisms has sort of a different day that it's finalized, a different time that it comes in. So it, it, it can be confusing, but I think I'm glad we're, we're making good use of these earmarks, especially that it might be maybe through you at a meeting in the next couple of months, it might be good to just invite some of our legislative delegation in because we, we're now at, I think probably since COVID, the third or fourth grant we've got. We're getting close to a million dollars between the sidewalk stuff, between the HVAC stuff, between the Chromebook stuff. It might be nice just to kind of go through that and then give them an additional list for the next couple of years. Thank you. And then you can add the list. So, but with that, I think this is, this is good. And it's also good that we haven't really lost a lot thus far, but we'll have to stay tuned.
Nancy?
This conversation is making me think of like where to go from here also. I think that, I think that at a future meeting, it would be good for us to have an update on where we are with our sped budget, especially considering how, how rocky the last two years were. Because that's going to be one of the questions that our legislators are going to want to know, but also our counterparts here in the municipal building are going to want to know about. And related to that, I think, I'm just curious about where we are with HVAC at the high school. So that's a minor question compared to, to the budgety kinds of things. But I think like before we would, like, before we would meet officially with either the finance committee or with our legislators, I'd want us to all be on solid ground on, on those topics. So thanks.
Anyone else? All right. So the next item on the agenda, we have the goals for our scary superintendent for 2025 to 2027.
So your goals are actually in the, under the superintendent report packet. It's probably at the very end. It's a pretty robust packet. So you kind of flip through it. It's probably up to the school improvement plan, I think.
Okay.
It's in there. So give me a second while we take a, take a look at it. Looks like this.
Yep.
So that. So, yes, as Jen mentioned, that these are the superintendent goals for the '25 through '27, which were reviewed with the Superintendent Evaluations Subcommittee last week with Mr. Buckley, Mrs. Gallivan and Mrs. Tenicio through that. So they reflect priorities around teaching and learning, building leadership capacity and ensuring operational excellence across the district. So the goals represent a continuation, I think, and I feel, the strong foundation we've built in focusing on improving student outcomes, supporting our educators and preparing our schools for the future. Just briefly, the first goal, the student learning and working with Dr. Hahn. The first goal centers on curriculum development and implementation, particularly around literacy and English language arts. We're continuing to strengthen foundational literacy in the, in the early grades and expanding research-based writing in grades two to five. And at the middle and high school levels, we're refining our English language arts pathways and coursework to assure alignment and rigor and access for all students. So really, it focuses on coherence throughout the system and across the system so that every student experiences high-quality instruction, no matter where they are in our, in our district. Goal two focuses on developing and supporting instructional leadership, particularly with principals. I also just wanted to bring your attention to another component of this goal. Focuses on the athletic director and the athletic department review. So I'll be working closely with the interim athletic director and high school principal to strengthen our leadership in the athletic department. And also in terms of working with them on our athletic program review so we can make sure that this review guides program alignment, leadership and school culture. The third goal involves the design of a teacher leadership program, which Dr. Hahn and I will be developing this year and then launching next year. So one step at a time for, for this program. So this will expand our professional growth opportunities for teachers in aligning with our district priorities around instructional leadership, professional culture and student learning. The fourth goal focuses on facilities and operations. So those are two major components. I put them in one. They could probably be two separate ones, but it felt like we were as facilities and operations. The first is continuing our work with the high school building project. And the second focuses on working with Mr. Friscus to assess our pre-K to five facilities needs in order to plan for the future of our elementary spaces and our capital priorities. So taking a look at the high school, taking a look at Plimpton, but also taking a look at pre-K to five as well. And then finally, my fifth goal focuses on my own professional growth. So that includes my ongoing participation at the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, or MASC, which is our school committee, and the collaboratives of Tech and BIKO, along with coursework and training related to student learning, behavioral health, and then areas, especially AI, is important. So collectively, these goals build upon our progress and our position to strengthen us in teaching and learning across all of our levels. I'm really proud of the work already underway and I'm grateful through the partnership with school committee, but then also with our central leadership team, such as Mr. Friscus and Dr. Hahn. As you notice, we don't write our goals in silos. You know, everything overlaps, so we can make sure we have this collective focus. And it really supports and drives our district plan, our planning for success. So I respectfully request your support and vote of approval for my goals of 2025. for my goals of 2025 to 2027.
Motion to approve the superintendence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buckley. Okay. Uh, motion by Mr. Breen, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Next up is middle school pathway exploration policy.
Great. So in your packet, uh, each of you have a copy of a, um, new pathway for, uh, that all middle schools needed to write this year, and our policy and concerns for students' pathways after middle school. Um, this was required by DESI or the state this year. We learned about it this summer. There's been a lot of good education webinars that we've been attending. Um, the state does provide, uh, a template with some basic instructions and, uh, minimal aspects that you must have in your policy. One thing is, if you were to go on DESI's, uh, website and look at their guidance, one thing I would just pay note to is that there's two sets of guidance. One is for, uh, CTE schools, Career Technical Education schools, and what's required of them. That obviously did not apply to us. And the other is for all middle schools, all districts with a middle school, um, to make sure that they are committed to some basic things that I think really, that are actually really, really important. Um, that we promote career exploration and awareness, um, beginning in the middle school, that we ensure our students have equal access to secondary options. Uh, for us, for instance, that for Tri-County or the Aggie, that our students are, are made fully aware of those options and those programs. Uh, that we're connecting our medical, middle school experiences to each student's, uh, career and academic plan. As you all know, we've been broadening our MyCap program at the high school. And it's, uh, part of our commitment is making sure that our students understand that as early now as middle school. And there's actually, we'll start integrating in the next year or two some middle school, uh, MyCap and pathway programming that we'll offer as well. And then making sure that we're supporting families and communicating this thoughtfully, uh, to all of our middle school students and families. So what you have is our commitment to that, a policy that's written that reflects our program. Um, and, um, I don't know, Dr. Goff, we're looking for a vote tonight, but we are committed to submitting this on November first. We are required to submit this by November first. There is a waiver process. We have found that some districts are requesting a waiver, but Dr. Goff and I feel like this, uh, this, the way that this policy written does reflect our program. And if the state has concerns, uh, we can edit and take a look and see what we need to add later.
It meets our, um, the mandates of DESI of everything we need to put in, in order to be able to move, to move forward.
All right. So are we voting to approve it tonight, then?
It, it's up to the school committee. If not, we'll need to do a vote the next time in order for Bill to get this into, to upload it to DESI for approval, um, by the November first deadline.
Yeah. We knew you wanted, probably wanted to read, so we just, it would just need to be next, the school committee, which is plenty of time for November first. Do you want to vote?
Question?
Well, I was going to say, it sounds like you're saying this could be potentially a work in progress. So we could vote to support it as that and can, and meet the deadline. Are you saying, are you recommending, though, that we read it tonight and vote it at the end of October?
Both are fine.
Both are fine with us.
It'll take us probably an hour to upload through the JEMs program.
Yeah, we have to upload it actually to JEMs, which is the, which is the same grant program that they want us to upload this. Um, and just making sure we have all the components, which, um, I, I feel that Bill has met all the components that we need to do in order to, to submit this. And then they'll let us know if we're, if we're missing any components, if we didn't give enough description on one of the components. So we, we, let's, let's upload it. And then if, if something kicks back, then we can call DESI and find out, you know, rather than apply for a waiver.
Okay. So we'll approve it tonight, is what you're saying. Okay.
That's my, my inclination would be to do that, yeah.
Motion to approve the middle school pathways exploration policy.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mr. Breen, second by, I think, Ms. Gallivan, the count Miss Sierik slightly. All those in favor?
I did.
And abstain, oh, sorry. You're abstaining. Okay. So we have four, zero, one.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have the superintendent report.
Okay. So October one enrollments are in your packet. So you can see the total enrollment is three, six, four, six. I looked at the October enrollments. At this time last year, it was three, six, three, five. Um, we know that, you know, we'll, we'll keep monitoring. We're going to keep that because it's October first. But if we update it, we'll make sure that we keep that one. But then we'll update the, we'll, we'll give you a new one, noting the changes. But because, um, everything EPUMs, um, goes right off October first, we want to keep up with the first date for that. Um, I also just wanted to mention, um, an update of what leadership has been doing in terms of the district plan. Um, you have a copy of that that you received last year in your packet. Um, over the summer, the Leadership Council engaged in an extent, extensive planning for success progress to, and a process to refine and advance our, our district plan. Our work centered on analyzing progress to date, identifying themes, and developing action steps and strategies. And we also focused on how to monitor progress and measure impact. So we reviewed, um, the outcomes from the 2425 plan. And, um, in terms of the, we did a thematic analysis across teaching and learning, school and community culture, and facilities and operations. Thank you, Dr. Han, for that. Um, we identified strengths and challenges. And based on the analysis and the summer work, we focused on, and you'll see if you, um, turn this, we have some, the highlighted areas in there that we are focusing on, um, for those implementations. And based on those benchmarks, um, we're going to develop, we developed final action steps. So if you look here, you'll see that those strategic initiatives are highlighted right, uh, right across the board, based on our analysis. Um, and we're developing, we've developed these action steps that align with this. So some examples, um, would be, um, you know, designing student incentives, instructional practices, looking at student and voice, implementing student voice, establishing a welcoming tool, toolkit for, for our families, um, building, um, a transparent master plan for pre-K to five facilities. So as you can see, some of this sounds familiar, like, you know, my goals, Mike's goals, Bill's goals, uh, the LC goals, they all focus and stem from the strategic plan, um, as well as the principal goals. Um, so the work really ensures that our goals are directly tied. And additionally, it also ties into the school improvement plans. So you have that in your packet. And everything in terms of the school improvement plan is in one document. So there's consistency in terms of expectations and formatting across all schools. Um, thank you, Jen Breen, for helping me put that together and looking at every period and comma and, um, you know, everything from, from soup to nuts. Um, for each goal, you'll see that there are action steps, but there's separate columns for outputs and outcomes. So output is a process, like you're tracking your items that are completed, but your outcomes is results-oriented. So you can have, like, your output as, um, implement professional development. Well, that's all well and good. But the outcome needs to be that you're implementing it with vitality. So, um, that's why we, we have those two, um, columns. I want to thank, most importantly, the teachers, the parents, the principals, and the community members who dedicate their time to be on the school council and to develop these plans. Um, it's, it's very important, and we're, we're very thankful for their, for their participation. I know there's a lot of reading, so please feel free to email me with any questions about the plans, and I'll make sure to get them to the principals and, and those school councils. Um, so just some other items. Um, the Walpole High School Student Superintendent Cabinet has been formed. I emailed all the members this week. I think my group keeps growing, but that's a, that's a good thing. Um, all grades are represented, and we have some returning students. So our first meeting will be held on October 22nd. I'm really excited to collaborate with them as they voice their ideas and work to improve our schools and develop their leadership capacity. Um, MCAS results are released. They're in the process of being mailed. And Dr. Han will be giving his data slash assessment presentation next month?
Yes.
Okay. Fails leach, don't forget. October 31st is the deadline. And we have a couple of upcoming dates. We have early release date tomorrow. No school on Monday. Town meeting, October 20th. And finally, it's National Principals Month. So, um, I want us to just, uh, make sure that we celebrate and honor our principals for their leadership and their dedication, um, to their students and the communities they serve. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks for a very cold, very handsome mouthful.
Okay. For old business, we have the high school project. Now, is there much new report on that?
Um, no. I think in terms of that, I do have a couple of things. So once I get through my superintendent packet, um, we have the glass that's coming in.
The greenhouse?
Yes, of the greenhouse. Um, the exterior is on schedule, and the interior work is on schedule. So as Mark Breen says, on time, on schedule.
On budget.
On budget, yeah.
And we do, we have a PVC meeting, um, next week, because that aligns. Is it next week? When's our, um, middle school building committee meeting? It's the same night as our middle school building committee meeting. Tuesday.
Excellent.
So we do have that Tuesday.
Make sure it's on the calendar.
Middle school first, PVC second.
Okay. Um, subcommittee activity. Do we have any subcommittees that?
We have the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee meeting last week. We have a curriculum subcommittee meeting, um, next week, right, Thursday? And, um, I'm just thinking, when Nancy just talked about special education, um, I think we'll schedule a special education subcommittee meeting.
We should, yeah.
So I might do this.
Okay. Um, so that's it for subcommittee. Citizens comments. How can tell us here tonight? So, um, next up, approval of warrants.
All right.
Is that what you mean? Yes. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the payroll warrant, number 2612PS, for the amount listed in your packet.
Second.
Motion by Miss Sierik, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants, um, 226013 for school special ed and middle school, and warrant number 226014 for school food service, special ed, and student activity funds for the amounts listed in your packet.
Second.
Motion by Miss Sierik, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. How about donations? Who wants to take those?
I could take donations. I'd like to make a motion to accept the following gifts to the Boydens School from the John D. Wangley Foundation, two thousand dollars. The Oak Post Road School, Bay State textiles, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. To the Yelm Street School from the John D. Wangley Foundation, one hundred dollars. And system-wide for Community Gardens, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, for a total of two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Second. Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Miss Sierik. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. And next up, we have minutes.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the September 25, 2025, regular school committee meeting minutes, and the October 1st, 2025, curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes.
Mr. Buckley, I'm pretty sure that was the superintendent. I think that's a typo.
Yeah.
The superintendent's.
That would be right.
Evaluation Subcommittee, as opposed to curriculum.
Oh, yes.
So amended. Second.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Most true, Jim.
Second. Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Miss Sierik. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. And that's a wrap.